Good evening. Welcome to the April 21st, 2025, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we've pro-- I'll turn my mic back on. Here we go. First up, we have Proclamations and Presentations for this meeting. Item A is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation to read, and then we have some, I think we have some representatives from Wings of Hope here? All right. I'll go ahead and read this, and then if you'd like to say a few words. Whereas sexual violence is a devastating and intolerable crime affecting men, women, and children of all races, ages, cultures, economic situations, and abilities; and whereas sexual violence is a major social problem in homes, schools, and communities across the country, resulting in countless physical, mental, and other health consequences; and whereas sexual violence seriously affects our youth, and is reported that one out of every four girls and one out of every six boys experience a sexual assault before the age of eighteen; and whereas it is also reported that one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted on college campuses nationwide; and whereas the month of April has been designated to promote awareness by increasing education and community involvement to prevent acts of sexual violence. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Stillwater.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so every sixty-eight seconds in America, somebody is sexually assaulted. Oh, okay. We good? That's better. Okay. So, every sixty-eight seconds in America, somebody is sexually assaulted. Actually, Oklahoma, our rate of reported sexual assault and attempted sexual assault is thirty-five percent higher than the national average. So, we appreciate the collaboration, the tireless efforts of the city and just the community of Stillwater in helping us try to eradicate this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a proclamation in recognition of the Humane Society's 50th anniversary here in Stillwater. Again, I'll read this proclamation, and then I know we have some folks from the Humane Society here, so we'll let you say a few words as well. Whereas the Humane Society has served the people and animals of Stillwater, Oklahoma, and its surrounding communities with unwavering dedication for fifty years, providing compassionate care, shelter, and advocacy for animals in need; and whereas Humane Society staff, board, and volunteers work tirelessly to promote public health and safety, protect animals from harm, build relationships and community partners, and foster humane treatment through education, outreach, and hands-on service; and whereas their efforts have resulted in thousands of successful adoptions, critical veterinary care, spay-and-neuter initiatives, and rescues, making a lasting impact on both the human and animal members of our community; and whereas the Humane Society remains a beacon of compassion and service, reflecting shared values of empathy, responsibility, and respect that strengthen the fabric of Stillwater and neighboring communities. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby honor the Stillwater Humane Society for fifty years of outstanding dedication to the health and safety of Stillwater, its surrounding communities, and Payne County.
Hi, I'm Jackie Ross Guerrero, and I'm the Director of the Humane Society. I've had the pleasure of having that position for seventeen years, and I can dishonestly say thank you for this. We work tirelessly and endlessly. The Humane Society started in a gentleman's garage. We're no longer in that garage, but we are able to help. I think this year, we helped almost seven hundred animals, and in the time that I've been at the shelter, we've helped over thirteen thousand. So I'm very proud of that, and again, thank you to the community and the City of Stillwater for the proclamation today.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your work. Next up, we have a proclamation recognizing a status that Stillwater has earned, an honor, I guess, that Stillwater has earned, that has been the work of a few people. One of them, I think most of the effort has come from Matt Sullen. So Matt, I'm going to read this, and then I'd love to hear you talk a little bit more about-- no, you say it there? And then, yeah, you can tell us a little bit more about this effort. Whereas You Are Beautiful-- excuse me. Whereas the You Are Beautiful National Project, founded in 2002, began with a simple message of three words that carry immeasurable power to spread kindness and remind every person that they are valued just as they are; and whereas these words resonate across age, background, culture, and belief, creating opportunities for meaningful connection and emotional well-being; and whereas the City of Stillwater embraces the principles of empathy, acceptance, and belonging, and strives to foster a community where all people feel seen, heard, and celebrated; and whereas by aligning with the You Are Beautiful Project, Stillwater reaffirms its commitment to promote mental wellness, celebrate diversity, and support the dignity of every individual; and whereas the installation of the You Are Beautiful message at the Stillwater Community Center serves as a permanent and visible reminder to all who visit that they are valued and welcome. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim Stillwater as a You Are Beautiful community, and encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to join this movement by spreading positivity, practicing kindness, and helping to ensure that our community remains a place where everyone feels welcome, safe, and appreciated. Matt, tell us a little bit more about You Are Beautiful and how we got this designation.
Sure. So, I'm from Chicago, and back there is where it originated from, and I'd worked with them a few times before moving down here, and they reached out to me about wanting to put a sign like this in every state, and they asked me to fill out an application and to write a sort of an essay about why I thought Stillwater was a good fit. So I did, and I really didn't think that I had a very good chance of getting it, but then, sure enough, I guess whatever I wrote was good, and they liked it, so they chose us. And I was proud, proud to do it, proud to bring it to Stillwater. I love this community. I don't know, the community that I see every day embodies everything that you just read. So to me, it fits. Thank you. A great thanks goes to the Art Integration Council to visit Stillwater, a big thank you to visit Stillwater, and to Stephanie Kinder at the Community Center. So it was a group effort, but it's beautiful seeing it up, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for all the work that you do and the effort that you've put into to bring this positive message to our community.
Thank you.
Continuing with some good news. Item D. We're thrilled to share some exciting news, that the Stillwater Electric Utility has earned Diamond Status, which is the highest honor from the American Public Power Association's 2024 Safety Awards. This recognition highlights our team's outstanding commitment to safe practices and leadership in public power. And that's not all. SEU also received the Reliable Public Power Provider Diamond Designation, recognizing our excellence in reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvements. We're proud to be one of only three municipal utilities in Oklahoma to receive this top honor. This marks the second year in a row that SEU has earned the Dual Diamond Awards, and it's all thanks to the hard work and dedication of our incredible team. It's also important to note that last week was Lineman Appreciation-- last week was Lineman Appreciation Day, so we were able to share our gratitude and continuous hard work and dedication of the linemen that serve our community. Overall, we're incredibly grateful for the entire SEU team and their dedication to provide safe, reliable, and award-winning public power. Lauren Smith from the Stillwater Electric Utility is here.
Good evening, councilors. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. First of all, thank you for your commitment to make our city as great as it is. I'm very proud of the utility staff and the city staff. You know, one thing I lead every meeting with is thank you for making safety our number-one priority, and it is. And that Diamond Status, we've held for two years in a row, which is very significant, and we're very proud of that. So, safety is everybody's business, and we're very proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Thank you for your work. Did we get an actual diamond to present it or anything? Oh, you kept that? That's--
I did. I got a big one. It was glass, but--
Oh, okay. That is a huge honor, and to be one of only three cities in the state that have been able to receive that, that's a big deal. All right. Takes us to item four, the Consent Docket. Councilors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. That moves us to item seven, Public Hearings. Item A is Receive Public Comment for a Proposed Text Amendment to Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 17, Required Improvements, Division III Improvements, Section 357, Water Distribution System, Subsection E, and Section 358, Sanitary Sewer Collection System, Subsection E, Chapter 41, Utilities, Article IV, Water Service, Division 1, Section 41-113, Tie-On Charge, Subdivision-- excuse me, Subsection B and Division 5. My commas are-- okay. Subsection B and Division 5, Service Extensions, Section 41-244, Lease-Purchase Agreement, Chapter 41, Utilities, Article V, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division 11, Sewer Main Extensions, Sections 41-590, Payment of Costs, and Section 41-591, Lease-Purchase Agreement, and adding, Chapter 41, Utilities, Article IV, Water Service, Division 5, Service Extensions, Section 41-245, Payment of Costs, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. David Barth, please tell us what all that means.
No problem. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. David Barth with Development Services. Here tonight for a text amendment to Chapter 23, the Land Development Code, Article 17, Required Improvements, Division III Improvements, Section 357, Water Distribution System, Subsection E.
Pretty sure you don't have to read it all again.
Okay.
I mean, I just did that.
And also, can I provide just a little bit of clarification on the public hearing?
Sure.
Our code requires a public hearing on text amendments to Chapter 23, and this also includes some changes to 41, Chapter 41. They're included because they're one subject, and so the ordinance that's for consideration later on the agenda does address all of the changes, and they're presented here at the public hearing for you to have a total picture of the changes being made, but the public hearing really is required for the Chapter 23 changes only.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm happy to let you read them, but if you're going to read them, I'm not going to read them next time.
No, I just have always read what we're ending, but I understand this one's pretty lengthy, so I'll just jump to the important stuff. So, the bottom line is our existing code in several places says that when the developer can enter into a lease purchase agreement with the city when it's necessary for the developer to expend funds for water and sewer infrastructure that will serve areas other than their developer, than their project area. And so we've had developers use this in the past, and Chapter 41 actually says that we shall enter into a lease purchase agreement when the developer bears the entire cost of the water and sewer infrastructure that can serve other areas. So, the proposed text amendment that we're leaning for, or asking for tonight is to change or remove the lease purchase agreement provision and to change that to a utility main development agreement. This way, right now with the lease purchase agreement, the developer still owns the infrastructure, which is problematic for us to maintain and take care of something that we don't own. And there's also some issues with there not being the requirement for easements, and so all of that language is being cleaned up with this ordinance. A utility main development agreement allows the city and the developer to enter into an agreement to where they can still recapture their initial investment over time by other developers tying into the infrastructure, whether it be a water line or a sewer line that serves area beyond the initial development. So, with the utility main development agreement, we would still, the developer would construct the water and sewer infrastructure, and we would still go through the process of inspecting it and accepting it at council. We would own it and maintain it, but then we would have the provisions for taking money and refunding it to, or rebating, I guess, the developer over a ten-year period. And then it's also, you can extend it for another ten years, I think. So, anyway, this is just a much cleaner way for us to do this. I think we're going to see more of these requests in the future, and so that's what we're here to propose this text amendment tonight.
David, if you could just clarify a little bit.
Okay.
This is when a developer's building, say, a new water line to serve a development of theirs.
Right.
But then it's potentially also going to be used by somebody else in the future?
Yes.
And so then, how, that second developer then pays them back, is the way it works right now?
Sure. So, yes, it's really easy to, I think, put this in the context of a sewer line. Let's say that you own a piece of property that has no access to sewer, and the neighbor next to you develops the property and extends sewer to serve their property. Now, you might have access to connect into that sewer system, and so it's a way for that developer who's spent, you know, several hundred thousand dollars building that sewer line to serve their development, to get some of that investment back, because now you have the benefit of tying your development onto that. And so, this doesn't work everywhere. You're not going to see this for every development, but in some places, especially out on the fringe where we don't have utilities and other people are, you know, developing areas, it makes sense for a developer who's putting in this investment. Also, there's a way for us to do this with a developer if we want a bigger line for future development. You know, we could then pay them back for increasing the size, you know, because they may only need a six-inch line, and instead, we wanted them to put in an eight- or a ten-inch line.
So, we're just sort of changing the mechanism that we would use to be able to encourage and incentivize a developer to put in this needed infrastructure by giving them a way to make some of the money back when other people tie into it?
Yes. And that way, we also don't, a lot of times, you'll see, if you look in our GIS, sometimes we have duplicate utilities, because somebody owns a water, put in a water line, well, this is a really good example, but, yeah, I just, it allows for smarter development of our community, really, to allow this. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. So, yeah, this ordinance, this, before you, this evening, makes all of the changes to remove the lease purchase agreement from our code and to add in the provisions for a utility main development agreement. And so, I would just ask if you have any questions before we have the public hearing?
Councilors, questions? Do you, can you tell us the process it's gone through to come to the, does it go through Planning Commission and--
Sure. So this did go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission understood the same thing that Ms. Carley explained to you, which was that, you know, their purview is for Chapter 23 only, but this did involve changes to Chapter 41.
Did we have the Building Trades Board and those folks of all--
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, we did take these to the Building Relations Committee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilors, any questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is anyone here hoping to speak about these text changes? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. David, did the Planning Commission make a recommendation to us on this?
Yes. The Planning Commission recommended the City Council approve the Chapter 23 text amendment four to nothing. Staff recommends the City Council accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, approve the Chapter 23 and Chapter 41 text amendments, and adopt the proposed ordinance.
Councilors.
I move to accept the Planning Commission recommendation.
As to 23 and the staff's recommendation, as to 41?
All that.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the Planning Commission's and the staff's recommendations for these changes to 23 and 41. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, those items are approved. That takes us to 7B. Receive Public Comment for a Proposed Text Amendment to Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 3, Land Development Process, Section 23-63, Plat Subdivision Approval Process, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability, CC-25-63. I assume we had good notice on this one?
Yes, on both of them.
I didn't ask you about the last one, but I'm sure we did as well. All right. David, tell us about this one.
Oh, thank you. I'm apparently forgetting to start the slideshow. I'll get into a routine one of these days. So this is another text amendment, Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 3, Land Development Process, Section 23-63, Plat Subdivision Approval Process. This is a much easier one to discuss. So, right now, our existing code in Chapter 23, or Section 23-63, allows final plats for residential subdivisions to be filed with the Land Records Division of the County Clerk's Office before the infrastructure required for that subdivision has been built or accepted by the City Council. And so, that's problematic for lots of reasons, but one of those I can think of is that it would allow somebody to develop a subdivision and plat it and sell lots to people, and those lots don't have streets, water, or sewer. So, that seems like that would not be a good thing, because you can't get building permits without streets, water, or sewer. The other issue is that once the city accepts that, those right-of-ways and easements, there are to, you know, the right-of-way belongs to the public then, but yet there's no street that's been constructed, maybe there's no infrastructure within the right-of-way, and so that's also problematic. When there's planned infrastructure for that right-of-way, but yet we're, the public, the right-of-way's already been dedicated to the public, now anybody who wants to build in that would have to get right-of-way permits and that sort of thing. So, it just makes sense that when you're developing a residential subdivision, that you build all of the required improvements, and then you get your final plat approved and file it at the plat. So the proposed text amendment just does that. It will require the improvements to be constructed and accepted, or the other provision in the code is the developer can do a development agreement for those improvements and put up a bond, and that's before any plat can be filed with the county. I would also say that our code used to allow, or said that you couldn't do this for commercial subdivisions, and allowed it for residential. So we're just making the rules the same, whether it's residential or commercial. This also went to the BRC, our Building Relations Committee. It went to the Planning Commission, and I've got their recommendation.
Thank you, David. Councilors, any questions? At this point, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone else, anyone signed up to speak on this one. Seeing no one here to speak on it, I'll close the public hearing and ask, David, what's the recommendation?
Planning Commission recommended the City Council approve the text amendment four to zero. Staff recommends the City Council accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the text amendment and adopt the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, David. Councilors?
I move to accept the Planning Commission and staff recommendations.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations. Please vote. Items approved with a vote of four to zero. Thank you, David. Item A is General Orders, and item A is Fiscal Year 26 Budget Presentation from Kristy Kluck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristy Kluck, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, and here tonight to present to you the FY26 Proposed Budget. So, just as a reminder, as always, this is a high-level presentation, but there is detail in your packet. So there's detail on the city, on the SUA, and on CETA, and then there's also a general fund budget summary. So as a reminder, these are the strategic priorities that the council has adopted, and this does provide that guidance to our department staff, finance staff, and city management as we develop the budget. And our budget timeline is here with our public hearings scheduled for May 19th, followed by budget adoption on June 2nd. And then our fiscal year starts on July 1st. And just as a reminder, any input that you guys have for staff will be incorporated into future presentations. As we're developing the budget, we always start with revenues, and so that's where we're going to start this evening as well. And with the exception of the SUA funds, revenues are projected to be relatively flat. So if you look at that SUA funds line there at the bottom, those increases include $2 million increase for electric sales revenue, $2.7 million increase in water sales revenue, $200,000 increase in wastewater revenue, and all of that relates to the scheduled rate increases that were approved in 2023. Also in the SUA funds line, there is a $1 million increase for the trade-in of nine waste management trucks. However, that will be offset by early payoff of the related debt. So here's that same revenue now by source rather than by fund type. Electric revenues make up forty percent of the total revenue budget, sales and use tax twenty-seven percent, water revenue makes up thirteen percent, and then other revenues are seven percent and include franchise taxes, licenses, permits, fines, and forfeitures. Then our wastewater and waste management revenues are six percent and five percent of total revenues, and airport revenues are two percent of total revenues. So I mentioned just a minute ago about our revenues being relatively flat, with the exception of our SUA funds. So this slide represents the two percent undedicated sales tax collections over the last ten years, as well as projections for fiscal year '25 and '26. We saw significant increases in our collections beginning in 2021, most of which can be attributed to inflation and the increased cost of consumer goods. But our trend is now showing that those collections are leveling off. And so this is concerning, since sales tax is the largest source of funding for our city's general fund, and the dependence on sales tax collections is one of the biggest constraints that Oklahoma cities operate under to fund general government services like our public safety and our parks. I do want to acknowledge that events such as the Boys from Oklahoma Concert will for sure have a boost on our sales tax. But until those events become regular occurrence, they can really just be viewed and treated as just one-time influxes of funds. And so those are not suitable for use on ongoing operational expenditures. So a better use of that is on one-time capital expenditures. So now moving to the other side of the equation with a look at expenditures. And again, this is by fund type. Total proposed expenditure budget is $148.2 million, which is an overall increase of $3.5 million compared to the fiscal year '25 budget. The proposed budget maintains a consistent level of service to our citizens as compared to fiscal year '25. Some of the major differences over the fiscal year '25 budget is $2.6 million increase in the other governmental funds for health insurance increases. There's a $1 million increase in the SUA funds for water treatment plant chemicals and the outsourcing of pavement restorations related to water leak repairs. There's also a $1.1 million increase in debt service payments, and that's spread across all funds. The debt funds new IT servers, a new fire engine, new vehicles under the Enterprise Leasing Pilot Program, and nine new waste management trucks. So those same expenditures now presented by category rather than fund. Personnel continues to be the largest part of our city's budget at forty-- Personnel continues to be the largest part of our city's budget at 44%. Purchase power at 20%. Other services and fees at 18%. Debt service at 10%. Materials and supplies at 7%. And then capital outlay at 1%. So I want to talk a little bit about capital, because this $1 million in capital is really more operational in nature. So it is specifically for the extension of water and electric systems when new customers initiate that process to connect to our systems. So other types of capital are not included in the proposed budget. So for functional areas with a dedicated funding source, so think of transportation, water, and wastewater. Capital expenditures will be brought to the council and trustees for appropriation once those contracts are ready to be awarded. And then for functional areas without a dedicated funding source, so this is our general fund departments. No capital is included in the proposed budget as there is currently no funding available. So this slide shows the FY26 proposed expenditures by those functional areas. I'll point out that, as in prior years, public safety has the largest part of this pie. Public safety includes police, fire, emergency management, code enforcement, and animal welfare. And I won't read all of these, but you can see those functional areas there on the left, and then their share of the pie there on the right. So this slide is reflective of the revenues and expenditures that we saw on the previous slides. So if you look at this far-right column, that total column, you'll see the $168.1 million of revenues, and then the $148.2 million of expenditures. This results in an organization-wide net income of $19.9 million. So questions surrounding this organization-wide net income number has been asked before, and so I just thought I would address that. It is not available to fund general operational costs. So that's found in the restricted and designated funds and is mostly dedicated for capital purposes.
Mostly in the SUA.
Mostly in the SUA. There is $10 million in the transportation sales tax fund, but I would say the rest is in SUA, yes. This slide also brings in the transfers that are required and necessary between funds. The transfers are relevant in understanding the annual performance and net income of each of the different fund types. Examples of transfers required between funds include amounts from operating funds to the self-insurance fund to cover employee health insurance and workers' compensation costs. Visitor tax from city accounts to SEDA, where that's administered. We have operating subsidies from the general fund to the airport and to SEDA, and operating subsidies from the SUA operating fund and the waste management fund to the city's general fund. So the first two columns on this table are the unrestricted funds of the organization. So that first column is the city's general fund, and then that second column is the SUA operating fund. And I'm sure your eye has already caught the negative net income amount of 4.8 million under the SUA operating fund, and I'll address that here in a couple of slides. That third column is the restricted and designated funds, and is where that $19.9 million of net income is residing. So this next slide, I'm going to drill into that, that third column of restricted and designated funds. So $67.1 million of our total revenues have some form of restriction or designation placed on them as soon as the revenues enter the organization. That restriction or designation may be put in place by the council, by the trustees, by the voters, or by an agreement between parties. So just some examples as a reminder. We're talking about water and wastewater revenues that are designated for reinvestment into the water and wastewater systems. The one-cent sales tax restricted for transportation projects, one-cent sales tax restricted for the SUA. We have visitor tax restricted for destination marketing and for visitor development amenities. And then ad valorem tax is restricted for retirement of general obligation bonds, as well as for carrying out purposes of tax increment financing districts. And then grant and donation proceeds are restricted for the purposes identified in those related agreements. So this slide is also showing the fund balance of each of the restricted and designated funds. So there at the bottom, the bottom two rows, beginning fund balance and projected ending fund balance. You can think of fund balance as the cash balance of the fund, less amounts already appropriated or committed. The fund balance will remain in these accounts, and we will carry that balance forward until it's fully expended for its designated or restricted purpose.
Go ahead.
I was going to give an example. So I talked earlier about capital and bringing capital with designated funding back to the council and trustees for approval or appropriation. So when we, let's say, a transportation project is ready for contract award, we would bring that budget amendment before the council at that time, and that would be pulled, that project would be funded from the fund balance that's identified here.
So, the beginning fund balance in transportation sales tax, for example, of 18.7 million, we have approved a pavement management program that has funds allocated towards it, but because those contracts haven't in fact been awarded on all those projects, they're still showing up in this transportation fund balance.
Correct, yes.
Kristi, while you're at it.
Mm-hmm.
While you're at it, you might mention, we had a discussion how some other cities do that, they go ahead and cover that, that amount of money. Talk about that for a second.
Yeah, I mean, we have the option where, and let's just focus on transportation sales tax, I think we can all relate to that. I mean, we could go ahead at the time of adopting the budget, we could go ahead and appropriate for specified projects. Any of that balance or, you know, that $10 million of new sales tax revenue that's projected, we could do that. As an organization, we've opted not to do that and wait until we have better estimates.
And the downside to doing that would be, we don't know what the project comes, when it comes along, there's price increase, whatever.
Right, so. Yeah, so if we were to estimate and go ahead and appropriate those funds when it came down to awarding the contract, if that was not enough to award the contract, we would have to find additional funding to be able to do so. So our engineering group does a really good job of working with finance on what is that available balance, and then prioritizing and programming appropriate timing of moving forward with those projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So here's now a look, same look, but this time we're looking at our unrestricted funding, which includes the city's general fund, that first column, and the SUA's operating fund. So just as a reminder, the general fund does cover costs to operate public safety, engineering, library, parks, public works, development services, finance, IT, HR, city manager's office, and city attorney's office. And then the SUA operating fund covers the operation of the electric utility. The city's general fund relies on an annual transfer from the SUA each year to cover its operations. For fiscal year 26, that transfer amount is $23.7 million, which is up 8.7% from the transfer in fiscal year 25 of $21.8 million. And there is additional detail in your packet on the transfer on the document that's labeled general fund budget summary. So here I wanted to talk a little bit about that negative $4.8 million in net income under the SUA operating fund. So in order to cover that deficit, we are using the beginning fund balance to cover that. The proposed budget also ensures that the emergency reserve balances listed here remain in place. Reserve targets have not changed since last year and are funded as noted on this slide. So just a reminder on our reserves. Those targets were established using methodologies endorsed by the Government Finance Officers Association and the American Public Power Association. Emergency reserves are established and maintained to meet the city's needs during extraordinary circumstances where we incur an unexpected loss of revenue or increases to our expenditures. Use of emergency reserves requires approval of the council or trustees, and generally, a method to replenish the reserve balances should be identified at the time that it's approved to use those balances. Just to recap, sales tax revenues are projected to remain flat. Utility sales revenues are projected to increase in line with the scheduled rate increases approved by the trustees. The expenditure budget ensures operating service levels remain consistent with fiscal year 25. And then with regards to capital, for the functional areas with a dedicated funding source, such as transportation, water, and wastewater, appropriation of fund balance will be brought to the council and trustees at the time contracts are awarded. And then for the functional areas with no dedicated funding source for capitals such as public safety, parks, and general facilities, there's currently no allocation of funding included in the budget, and appropriation will be brought to the council as funding may become available. This is just a reminder of our next steps, which is that public hearing on May 19th, budget adoption on June 2nd, and start of the fiscal year July 1st. What questions do you have for me?
Councillors, questions?
Kristi, as I recall, a couple of years ago, we had conversations about concerns about our bond ratings due to fund balances and transfers and so forth. Can you just share where we stand on that right now?
Yes, so we have, I would say we've made improvement in that area. So there was a time when we were not moving forward with utility rate increases even though we were experiencing increasing costs. That was putting pressure on our financial situation. Now that we do have the rate schedule in place and we are moving forward with that, that is alleviating that concern.
Okay, thank you. On the, oh, go ahead.
I always find it helpful when we, you give us this kind of crystallized version. I know you all have been working very hard as department heads and city manager's office. Just to give us a little bit, a background of what all you, like, how do you all come to this presentation to us? How, I guess maybe the question is, can you just share a little bit about how each department develops their budget and what that looks like?
Yeah, it's a process that takes several months. We usually start in the fall, and as I mentioned earlier, we always start with our revenue projections because that's going to determine what appetite we have for expenditures. So we start there, we always plug in our debt assumptions first or right behind that, and then we start moving into our personnel and O and M. And that's when we start engaging our department heads, and they help us with that. So as far, for our O and M, we are providing targets to them and asking that they submit budget, a budget meeting that target. If they do identify a need that's above and beyond the target that's provided to them, we ask them to submit that separate. And then as our city management team comes together and starts evaluating the budget as a whole, that's when we start considering those extra asks.
The expenditures by function shows 22% or 32.7 million is spent on public safety in this budget? That's not a breakdown between, well, I think most of that's general fund, is all of that general fund?
All of that's general fund.
Okay.
Yes.
So just so we're clear.
Public safety does not have, well, with the exception of fire, public safety does not have an alternative funding source. And so fire's only alternative funding source is their fire fees collected when they respond to a rural fire.
Which, as we learned in our presentation about the rural fire contracts, we don't actually even recover what it costs us at this point. Maybe we're getting close.
We rely on those subscription fees to come in.
But just catching my eye from one slide to the other, 32.7 million spent on public safety, the next unrestricted general fund revenue is 28.5, which means we don't make enough in our unrestricted general fund revenue to even cover public safety.
Correct.
Public safety takes up 107% or so, I don't know, my math's not good, it's more than that, of all of our general fund revenues.
Correct.
Which, not as a value judgment, but just as a, just as something that I think people need to be aware of. This is true, I was actually just speaking to the prior mayor of Broken Arrow, who talked about how their public safety is about 120% of their overall. So this is not something that's unique to Stillwater, it's not something that's unique, I think, in a lot of places, but I think it is important to note when we talk about using the other revenue, you know, outside of our general fund to cover, to add money to our expenses here, it's not because we're spending a lot of extra money on silly stuff, right? We have to cover general fund money just to pay the full public safety costs of our community, which is absolutely true of just about every community in the state. I'm not sure of one that doesn't have that same issue, and so it's, I think that's just important for people to recognize that we're not talking about, you know, when you look at these numbers, there are not, there's not expenses in here that you're looking at and going, why would you spend, you know, money on that thing?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty bare-bones budget.
It is. And just one other question, I know this is a, you know, when we prepare a budget, we're looking at, what is kind of worst-case scenario? Like, this is, we've got to have a budget in place so that if, you know, we're going to estimate low on revenue, we're going to estimate a little high on expenses, because we don't ever want to be in a situation where the actuals, you know, revenue doesn't meet the expenses we have. But can you give me a sense of where we are right now, say, through this fiscal year on revenue expenses? Are we ahead of revenue, behind on revenue, ahead on expenses, behind on expenses?
So, sales tax specifically, and let's put the concert aside.
Sure.
Because we know that's going to be a boon to our local economy. I mean, we're projecting to come in right at our projection.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there's, and generally speaking, throughout the general fund, that's what we're seeing. Haven't, if, if we would have, if staff would have noticed an adjustment, whether that's up or down, be needed in the current fiscal year, you would see that on an agenda.
Yeah, you guys keep up with that as we go, yeah.
Yeah.
But generally, over the last few years, our budgeted transfer needed has been, the actual transfer needed has been a little less.
Yes.
Which is a testament to the staff here, making sure that they're keeping an eye on money and making sure that we're not getting close, which I think is, again, just something I wanted to point out, that we're, we do plan for what happens if things don't go very well. But in most years, we're able to step back and actually end up a little bit better than what we thought.
Yes, we do build in some contingency funds into all of our operating funds just for those things that are more of an emergency, something not to the level that we would tap into reserves, something more, something that's urgent, but just not to that level where we would tap into reserves. So oftentimes, whenever our transfer is less than what we budget, it's because we haven't used all of our contingency in the general fund, or we have position vacancies, and so we have idle personnel dollars.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, we'll be looking forward to the next steps as we continue the budget process. Thank you for all of your work, and I know your department and the budget process consumes everyone for a big chunk of time during any given year, and we appreciate the work that goes into it, because we also know that we win, you win awards just about every year on the quality of the. on the quality of the work that you all do on finance and budget here at the City of Stillwater, and that's a, makes me feel very happy, or very confident in when we get these numbers from you all, that these are good, clean numbers, and we know what's happening.
I'm glad we can put your mind at ease.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, resolutions. Resolution number CC-2025-6, a resolution fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
This resolution is just the next required step in the process to finance the new animal welfare facility as approved by the voters. This resolution fixes the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixes the time and place the bonds are to be sold, and authorizes the city clerk to give notice of the sale as required by law. We will come back on May 19th with another resolution to actually issue the bonds and approve other details of the issuance.
Counselors, any questions? Is there a motion on the resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2025-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, please vote. Resolution passes with a vote of three to zero. The minutes will note that Council Clerk did not take part in the conversation or the vote on that item. Ordinance, sorry, Section 10 ordinances. On first read, ordinance number 3565, an ordinance amending Stillwater Code of Ordnances, Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 17, Required Improvements, Division 3 Improvements, Section 357, Water Distribution System, subsection E, and subsection, excuse me, and Section 358, Sanitary Sewer Collection System, subsection E, Chapter 41 Utilities, Article 4, Water Service, Division 1, Section 41-113, Tie-On Charge, subsection B and Division 5, Service Extensions, Section 41-244, Lease Purchase Agreement, Chapter 41 Utilities, Article 5, Sewers and Sewers Disposal, Division 11, Sewer Main Extensions, Section 41-590, Payment of Costs, and Section 41-591, Lease Purchase Agreement, and adding, Chapter 41 Utilities, Article 4, Water Service, Division 5, Service Extensions, Section 41-245, Payment of Costs, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability. Let's see, these are the changes that we approved earlier this evening. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3565 to second read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3565 is advanced to second reading. Also on first reading, we have ordinance 3566, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 3, Land Development Process, Section 23-63, Platte Subdivision Approval Process, repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for severability, also from earlier this evening. Counselors?
Go ahead.
Move to advance ordinance 3566.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3566 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3564, an ordinance closing a portion of a general utility drainage and pedestrian easement located on attractive land lying in the northwest quarter of Section 11, Township 19 North, Range 2 East of the Indian Meridian, Payne County, State of Oklahoma, addressed as 410 West Franklin Lane.
And move to adopt ordinance 3564.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3564 is adopted. That takes us to reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carley?
Nothing to report.
Mr.?
Brady.
Brady Moore.
Yes.
Holy cow. Wow.
Nice to meet you, Mayor.
I have to write you guys' names down when I do this, I'm not even kidding.
Well, good news to report, since our last time we met up here, you're good. Since the last time we met up here, as you know, we had an incredibly successful weekend in Stillwater with the Boys from Oklahoma Concert. It was a fantastic weekend, we appreciate our collaboration with Oklahoma State University and Osho Athletics, our teams here at the city that met with them for months and months leading up to the event. Big thanks to Rob Hill and Don Dodson for leading that coordination from the city side, and, you know, big thanks to our police, fire, public works, all our departments had some kind of hand in preparation for the event weekend. But I do want to give a special shout-out to our Waste Management Department. They, they are incredible, Matt and his team, they do incredible work for our community that often goes unnoticed. They provided additional services during the Boys from Oklahoma Concert Series to ensure our customers' waste needs were met, and they helped keep our community clean, especially those areas, our core commercial districts around Campus Corner, Washington and the Strip, and the Elm Street area and downtown. They began commercial collection routes early in the morning hours, they included Saturday and Sunday in their delivery, he adjusted the employee schedules, they did it with joy, serving our community in that way, emptying dumpsters, removing garbage from our ground around the dumpster areas, and just really keeping those areas clean. We even had street sweepers running at 4:00 a.m. on concert days, just to make sure the community was clean and looking snappy for our visitors, so. And all, they collected more than 29 tons of trash from the event. It's an incredible amount of work, and we're grateful for their continued dedication to our community. So hats off to Matt and the waste collection, or Waste Management Team.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks for those details, too, that's amazing. Everybody at the city, really, congratulations to everyone who was able to put in the extra work that it took, and it's great, it was great to see so many comments, at least online, and from, I mean, we've gotten emails from people in different parts of the country that were here, it was nice to see people noticing that. I mean, I saw comments on Facebook saying, "Town was so clean, the traffic flowed so well," and it was really, really a fantastic testament to the work of the city staff. Vice Mayor?
I encourage you to take advantage of the annual spring used book sale next weekend, which is organized by the Friends of the Stillwater Public Library. The event will begin Thursday, May 1st, with preview night, then on Friday and Saturday will be open to the general public, and the event will end Sunday evening with the unlimited dollar bag sale. This year's event will be at the Stillwater Community Center due to the library's fire suppression system replacement project currently underway. The schedule and more details are available on the library's website. This is always a great event, and we hope you can join.
One of my favorites, one of my wife's least favorites, because I bring home a lot of books. Council Clerk?
The city's voluntary opt-in notification system, for those who want to receive important information, has been revamped, and some examples of the information available are severe weather information, areas to avoid during an emergency situation, changes to the trash and recycling schedule, and the system also now includes fire and wildfire emergencies. So we've seen lots of upgrades. If you want to enroll or unenroll at any time, you may do so at stillwaterok.gov/notify. Also, I want to announce that Emergency Management Director Rob Hill has been named to the Governor's Wildland Fire Response Working Group, so congratulations to Rob, we appreciate his commitment to our community and to our region, and now he gets to have some influence in the Governor's office, so.
That's great. I would just add on that notification system, I think I, when you go in and register for it, you can go in and change settings on what you, so if you've previously registered for it, you should go in and double-check and make sure that you've got the notices set the way you want them, because I know some folks noted that they had certain things turned off, so go back in. I got texts this weekend about severe weather, severe thunderstorms coming through, so.
I did, too, but I also got phone calls, I need to go toggle that one off.
You have individual settings.
I was very well aware.
Councilor Harden?
Yes, last week, April 13th through the 19th, was National Animal, Animal Wear, let's try that again, National Animal Control Appreciation Week, and National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I want to express my appreciation for animal control officers and our dispatchers who answer the 911 calls. Both careers can be exhausting, stressful, and challenging, yet also rewarding, noble, and necessary to ensure a safe and healthy community. We hope that our animal control officers and 911 dispatchers know that they are truly appreciated.
Absolutely, thank you. I'll ask you to join me in welcoming the new superintendent of Stillwater Public Schools, Tyler Bridges, and his family to our community. Last week, the school board officially selected Mr. Bridges to take the helm, providing trusted leadership over existing projects, learning opportunities for students, and support for educators and staff. Mr. Bridges has a tenured and impressive career in Oklahoma Public Schools, and I encourage you to get to know him and welcome his family to Stillwater. I had a chance to meet them last week at their announcement event, and very impressed, I think they'll be a great addition to our community, and looking forward to our continued collaboration with our partners at Stillwater Schools, and excited for his leadership. Anything further, counselors? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater City Council, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be adjourned. And at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for today, April 21st, 2025, and I will get the agenda to actually come up on my screen in just a second. There it is. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.
Just a hair over an hour.